Call to order, the Tuesday, May 3, 2016, meeting of the Iredell County Board of Commissioners. At this time, if you'd please bow your heads in a moment of silent prayer and reflection. Please stand for the-
Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the color which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Smith, are there any adjustments to the agenda?
I have no adjustments tonight, Ms. Chairman.
Move into our first public hearing, which is Item 7, Public Hearing to Consider a Request from MP Leasing LLLP to Rezone 1.5 Acres from Residential Agricultural to Neighborhood Business.
Ms. Chairman, actually, you want to hit the appointment before the board first?
Okay, yeah. I already checked that off. Okay, well, let's start with the appointments before the board. This is a request for the Emergency Medical Services to adopt a proclamation to declare May 15 through 21, 2016 as EMS Week. And Ms. Blair Ritchie?
Mr. Chairman, please come up.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I would like to thank you for reviewing our request to adopt a proclamation to declare EMS Week in Iredell County. EMS Week this year is May 15 through May 21. This year marks the 42nd Annual National EMS Week. In 2015, we responded to 31,573 calls, and this continues to climb each year. I would like to thank you for your support and ask for your continued support for Iredell County EMS.
Thank you, Ms. Ritchie. What I would like to do is to read the EMS Week proclamation. First, I would like to ask for a motion to adopt this proclamation.
How for that motion, Mr. Chairman?
That motion is made by Commissioner Johnson. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. EMS Week proclamation to designate the week of May 15 through 21, 2016 as Emergency Medical Services Week, whereas Emergency Medical Services is a vital public service, and whereas the members of Emergency Medical Services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas the Emergency Medical Services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, and others, and whereas the members of Emergency Medical Services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills, and whereas Iredell County desires to continue to improve upon its emergency medical systems in order to assure all citizens of the highest standards of emergency medical care, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value of the accomplishments of emergency medical service providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now, therefore, the Iredell County Board of Commissioners, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of May 20, 15 through 21, 2016 as Emergency Medical Services Week. With the theme EMS Strong, we encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities this third day of May, 2016. Ms. Ritchie, if you could bring your staff and just come up so we can get a picture of everybody up here. I'm sure somebody has a camera. Good night. That's good. I want to present this proclamation on behalf of the County Board of Commissioners. If the board could stand up.
Ms. Ritchie, before you walk away, you said that y'all answered 31,000 calls in one year?
Yes. In the calendar year of 2015, we answered 31,573 calls.
You know, considering that we have 170,000 residents, that's almost a six-to-one ratio. Now, I understand that some of those calls are frequent flyers, and you don't transport somebody every time that you get a call, but I would say it's hard for people to say that they aren't touched, or they're not affected, or EMS does not have an impact in their life if this organization is making that many calls in a county our size. I would say that it's a pretty significant department in Iredell County. So, again, thanks so much for what you do.
Thank you. We will now proceed with Item 7, a public hearing to consider a request from MP Leasing LLLP to rezone 1.5 acres from residential agricultural to neighborhood business. Mr. Matthew Todd.
Good evening to the board. I'll go over this one fairly fast. This is a property on Brawley School Road. You can see it outlined in blue. Planning Board did recommend unanimously seven to zero to approve this. Staff recommends the rezoning because it matches the land use plan, and the lot is adjacent to commercially zoned property. That's the land use plan showing Corridor Commercial. An aerial, there's an existing residence on the property. Another image of the property showing the surrounding land uses. That's the subject property, looking across Brawley School Road. Again, across at a commercial use, back toward town, down the peninsula. And I'd be happy to answer any specific questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Todd? And the planning board did recommend approval seven to zero.
Yes.
Ms. Gaither, has anybody signed up for?
No one's signed up.
Okay, we'll open this public hearing. No one has signed up to be heard, so I will canvass those of the public who are in attendance. Does anyone wish to be heard on this matter? Not hearing or seeing anyone? Now close this public hearing and ask if there is a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make motion to recommend in favor of the zoning map amendment and to make a finding that the approval is consistent with the adopted 2030 Horizon Plan, and that said approval is reasonable and in the public interest, and furthers the goals of the 2030 Horizon Plan because it is in harmony with the area and is adjacent to commercially zoned property.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Robertson. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Now move on to administrative matters that were discussed at the pre-agenda meeting for consideration on the consent agenda. Mr. Smith, if you could summarize those for the record.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Yeah, a request from administration for a removal or renewal of the county-funded Assistant District Attorney contract, and this is in relation to the inmate reduction efforts. A request from the public library to apply for a library edge technology grant. A request from the Finance Department for approval of a three-year lease renewal with the North Carolina Farm Service Agency. A request from the Finance Department for approval of a surplus declaration to transfer 123 K-9 prisoner transport insert. A request from the Planning Division for the consideration of a high-density option to develop a sod sales business, and request for approval of the April 19 minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Is there any further discussion on these items? Is there a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Vice Chairman Norman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. And now move on to some announcements of vacancies that are occurring on various boards and commissions. There is no action going to be taken on these tonight. That will be taken two weeks hence. Anyone has an opportunity to go on the county website and get a review what these positions involve, as well as submit their names or names of others for consideration. There are two announcements for the Troutman Board of Adjustment. The terms of Helen Byers and Leighton Getzinger are expiring, and they have been nominated for reappointment by the Troutman Town Council. The local Department of Social Services Board, in that matter, I was appointed to fill the term of Cheryl Lucas, which expired June 30. And the Board of Health, Mary Lacy Johnson, the pharmacist member, has resigned. So, once again, all three of those boards, we will have a hearing for approval of any applicants at our next meeting. Is there any unfinished business? Any new business? Mr. Smith, if you could please view your budget message and your county manager's report.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. This is always the longest county manager's report of the year. I'm actually going to try and shorten it up for you this year. I'm doing it a little bit differently. I'm going to hand out something to follow along this presentation with. Usually, I'll read a budget message, but I decided this year it'd probably be better to hit the high points, and if you have any questions, I'd be glad to try and answer As you know, the budget process begins, for staff, probably the end of December or early January, and ramps up through February when we get to meet with the board and decide what we think are priorities, or whether they're priorities or not, at the winter planning retreat. So, we've been working on this for quite some time, and the size of the budget will show you that things are getting a little more complicated, and if not more complicated, a little bit bigger. So, one thing I'll start with, and I think this is significant because it plays into the development of the fiscal year, or fiscal year 2017 budget, are the 2016 efforts and accomplishments. This has been a very busy year. We have undertaken two major projects. We are in the process of the design of a 300-bed addition to the jail. Core facilities are going to be for 700 inmates. This is, I believe, the biggest project in Iredell County history from the government side, not the school side. And we're also simultaneously dealing with the public safety facility, which will be out on Bristol Drive. These two projects combined are to the tune of about $35 million and will take us probably the better of the next three years to complete, but there has been substantial work already completed on both of these. I'll point out, on the bottom left of the screen, that's kind of the first rendering of what the jail is proposed to look like, courthouse, and then the jail. So, as I mentioned, we're going to be working on that for probably the next 10 months in the design phase, and then we'll start with some site work and construction. Just over this last year, fairly recently, we submitted a Partif grant, Parks and Recreation Trust Fund, for the Jennings Park, which the board authorized the sale of property that was originally slated for the North Iredell Park, and we're going to leverage that money to hopefully gain additional funds through Partif, and we've already bought property adjacent to the Babe Ruth Sartoma Park for what's going to be a pretty major park in the north end of the county. And then finally, last year, or this year, the board implemented a 2% salary scale adjustment for employees to help address compression and turnover with the thoughts of doing the same to complete what we had recommended as a 4% overall project in this coming year. Always try and include something about the growth and economic stability of our county. We continue to grow. All you have to do is drive around Mooresville, and now it's getting, you know, coming north through Troutman and Statesville somewhat, but primarily in Mooresville. 2016 projections have us at 171,000 residents. We are the 15th largest county in the state, and we are one of only a handful of what they call receiving counties, which have a high in-migration level and, you know, birth rate as well, meaning that it's a very healthy, growing community. This graph, and you can probably see it better in your handout, shows Iredell County basically compared to the 15 largest counties in the state, and what we have focused on here is that our tax rate is probably ninth or 10th highest in the state. Very, very high tax rate, not tax base, low tax rate, sorry, guys.
I was about to say.
Done trouble.
High tax base. And the 52 and 3/4 cent property tax is the lowest of the top 15, so that is a good situation for us to be in. Development activity, this kind of goes along with what I was saying about construction in the southern end. In 2015, we saw an increase of 30% in our residential permits and 13% in commercial. A lot of multifamily is included in that commercial, although we're trying to break that out for future reports, but we are seeing a significant amount of growth, and we are beginning to see significant projects start to pop up in the planning stages in both Troutman and Statesville. As you know, an additional inspector, building inspector, was added mid-year this year to accommodate the growth and to prepare for what we're seeing is a large number of retirements. The economic development corporations have been successful. Almost 1,500 jobs have been added in 2016, an investment of $69 million in this community or in this county, and that is split over the two, Statesville Regional Development and Mooresville South Iredell. And unemployment, or unemployment, sorry, it's the new investment graph, and then local unemployment rate has continued to go down, and since the yearly average was 5.4% last year, and that's the way it's trended through the first two months of this year. Revenues, tax base has grown, almost 3% increase in ad verum tax collections, close to a $22 billion tax base. That is a significant tax base. Saw a little bit more growth than I was anticipating this year, but you have to balance that with the fact that our sales tax growth was not what we had expected. We actually saw a little bit of a drop over what we budgeted for 2016, and basically we're considering less than a 1% increase in 2017. So, this board has said on many occasions that you can't really count on sales tax in this year, and what we expect next year kind of proves that. Development revenue, with all that development activity comes revenue. We saw a big increase, almost 30% higher than last year, this year, and we're expecting the same in the coming year as well.
Okay, can I ask you a question about that previous slide? So, in order for our tax base to have grown 2.8%, development had to go up 29% to drive that?
I would say yes. I mean, that would be through development, that would be through additions on property, things of that nature, property improvements, motor vehicles, personal property, things of that nature.
So, if we saw development go down, then that tax base, or looking forward, we would expect to drop in the low 2s, probably?
It may, it may. I think we have enough in the pipeline that we would probably stay fairly stable, but it could. If we see development go down, obviously, that's going to have an end result impact. Okay, on the expenditure side, and this is really the crux of the budget, focused on the following things, as I mentioned, the jail construction and the public safety complex. We have money already budgeted for those projects. We're budgeting more. We're building into them. We're trying to prepare for staffing issues or staffing costs and operational costs when the jail does open because it is a much bigger facility, so we're planning for that. So, those are going to dominate the next year from both, you know, the costs and the activity. Increased funding for economic development, I'll get to that a little bit later. We have had, through the task forces and just through meetings and other conversations and just through the need, the increase in funding for economic development would be more from a product development perspective. Funding for the capital improvements plan and continued employee retention and recruitment efforts. I'll get to all of these in a little more detail as we go along, but to stop what we have already started with the recruitment and retention is leaving it half-done. So, in the overall budget, I'm proposing a 2.95% increase from this year to next. And just to note, we have already made right at $4 million in reductions of what was requested to what is being recommended to you. From an expenditure standpoint, the way that this generally breaks out is education, public safety, and human services. This is how, in most years, the top three will come out. Human services and public safety, I don't know if they've gone back and forth in the past, but they're always very close. And then general governmental being at 10%, that's where we do account for the salary studies, the increases to salaries and whatnot. Education, being the biggest part of the budget, it's part of 47% of the general fund budget, the 3.5% increase that's being recommended to you overall in education is 61% of the growth of the budget. So, it shows how big of an impact education expenditures have on the county's operating budget. The total increase, just under $3.3 million, and the recommended per pupil allocation goes from 1, or 1,495 to 1,547. And I'll note that, I don't have to go back for this, for those that are watching or listening, the per pupil rate has to be uniform between both Iredell Statesville Schools and Mooresville Graded School District. So, when we do allocate that number, it has to equal out, and sometimes it has an impact on the percentages that they have requested. Iredell Statesville, actually, this graph shows the growth in the two school budgets, Iredell Statesville and Mooresville Graded School District, so these have generally grown as the overall budget has grown. Iredell Statesville being recommended a 3.3% increase in current expense, and that's that per pupil allocation, and a 25% increase in capital outlay, big capital outlay year. Decrease of $450,000 in debt service, which actually contributes to that capital number being higher based on the formula that we use. Mooresville Graded School District, over 4% increase in current expense, much less in capital outlay, basically same as with Iredell Statesville, the debt is increasing, debt service is increasing substantially in Mooresville Graded, therefore, the capital outlay will be going down, and that's directly attributed to the Mooresville High School project. And finally, with Mitchell Community College, just under 4% increase in current expense, basically flat capital outlay, and we have contributed, or I'm recommending that we contribute $80,000 towards property acquisition. On the public safety side, ECOM and EMS calls, they're growing faster than the population is growing. The public safety complex is going to help us with ECOM. We're basically at a max with the number of consoles that we have in our current facility, no room to grow. That will give us the ability to grow. In EMS, we are, or I am proposing, that we finish out the shift from 24-hours to 12-hour shifts. That's something we started two years ago. We did it first in the Statesville base and then hit about 70% of the remaining bases last year, and then this year, if you approved the recommendation, we would go to an entire 12-hour shift scenario for EMS. That would require the addition of eight, additional, the addition of eight paramedics. And finally, just want to mention, the Cool Spring Volunteer Fire Department will include an EMS base, and which will also help us, once completed, to, I'll give us a base and have better response times out to the Cool Springs area. Capital projects, in our capital projects, or Capital Improvements Plan, just under $10 million, much of this is already budgeted. It is a plan. That plan includes the jail and the public safety complex to the tune of about $8 million. So, much of that is already in the project funds for those two buildings. Last year, we began this format of our CIP, and we were continually formalizing that and trying to get it just right, but we seem to have settled on a model that works and where we can look for all the big capital projects over the next five years. Other requests in this year's CIP, transitioning the Sheriff's Office to Viper, the radio system, completing our computer-aided dispatch project in ECOM, the Phase 1 development of the Jennings Road Park, again, this is partnering with Partif and with money that we have already gained through the sale of another parcel, and proposed renovations to the Government Center South. DSS is out of space, one of our newest buildings, but they are out of space, and we are proposing that we renovate or up to 22 offices, if I'm not mistaken, in Government Center South. Human capital, employees, as we talked about with, or as you talked about with EMS earlier, good example of- good example of how important our employee base is. I would propose that we maintain the 2% salary scale adjustment that we've put in place this year, and also maintain 3% merit-based increases that we've had in the budget for the last few years. We have been requested to look at shift differential pay, which we talked about at the winter retreat. Think it's a good idea, would recommend that we do that, that has been included in the budget for the public safety departments, help them with recruitment and retention of those folks that work at night. Proposing that we fund a pay study for all employees. We have done this in phases over the years, but we've generally always done one. We've put them off for the last couple of years in order to get some of our foundational increases in place and be able to afford those. But I'd like to fund the pay study this year and potentially, depending on revenues, fund the results in FY '18. New positions, increased activity and growth, again, we're growing at a steady rate and that is results in a need for more services. Social services has seen a 21% increase in children's services since 2010, 75% in adult services and 8 in economic services. NC FAST, the state program that they are now mandated to use, has also slowed them down significantly. So the increases that I've shown there are compounded by the inability for them to efficiently do their jobs because of NC FAST. EMS, as I mentioned, the 24 to 12-hour transition. In the sheriff's office, proposing that we add two additional detectives in the economic crimes and the domestic violence divisions. Both of those have seen significant increases in the last few years. In our purchasing division of finance, we currently have two people. We have over 1,000 employees with contracts, procurements, POs, a number of financial issues that go through our purchasing department. The complexity and the increase has just gotten to the point where we would like to add a staff member there. And environmental health goes along with the development. Environmental health has seen a 100% increase in the number of permits that they're dealing with. This is something that I think they could have added last year but did not, and I fully support that they do it this year. They have done a lot to get their backlog down over time, this will help them tremendously to do that. Looking forward, as I mentioned, the economic development increase, I'm proposing that we put $500,000 towards product development or basic economic development to be used for future projects. We have been contributing over the last couple of years to our economic development fund, but I think that if we ramp this number up this year, it may pay dividends down the road. I suggest that we just monitor development closely. I am not proposing that we add another building inspector. I think we have kind of leveled out staff-wise. We are working on some software improvements that will allow the building inspectors to become a little more efficient. They will have sort and assign routines could be automated instead of done sitting in a truck and doing those by hand. That'll probably give us another full-time equivalent if we're able to do that. I will mention that the Mountmoren Volunteer Fire Department is requesting a half-cent increase in their district. They did get a one penny increase last year, and based on the discussions that we've had about the fire service and the changing nature and some of the requests we've had from new employees in the fire service, serious consideration should be given to whether or not that, you know, that additional half-cent is approved at least in this year. Continuing the funding for the construction projects, I've mentioned that several times. And investment in our departments. One thing that we are going to do from a logistical standpoint is provide some flexibility in the, with the departments and their ability to move money within certain categories, be it operational or capital or things of that nature, that they will not have to come to me in every occasion or in a lot of occasions to get budget transfers and things of that nature. And hopefully, what I'm thinking will happen is that this will allow them to utilize money that, in a line item that may not be, they may not be able to use it for things they really need and hopefully drive down spending. So, in culmination, my recommendation, as required by General Statute 195-11, I present the following 2017 recommended budget of $190,380,076. This will keep the tax rate at $0.5275 for a $100 valuation. It's based on a tax base of $21,982,514.53 with a collection rate of 98.58%. The fund balance as of June 30, 2016 is estimated to be at $38,442,700, which is just over 20% of the recommended budget. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have. I appreciate the opportunity to work for Iredell County, and I would like to thank the staff that has contributed numerous hours towards this project, and I will specifically call on Susan Robertson as my personal thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. We always appreciate the stubby pencil work, the sharpened pencils that you and our department heads and our finance department in particular always produce a quality product, taking into account this board's general philosophy of watching the bottom line and yet responding appropriately and providing services to the people of the county. I would open up the floor for any comments or questions that you'd have of Mr. Smith, realizing, of course, that we will be spending a lot of time in the next week and a half getting into the weeds, department by department. Hearing none, once again, Mr. Smith, thank you very much for the time and effort that you put into this product. It is always a quality effort and it's a team effort. We have a great team of departments made up of folks who are absolutely focused on delivering the best services possible to the citizens of this county for the least amount of cost. Great return on investment, and we just want to thank all of you. And at the end of the day, after we put it all through the meat grinder, we'll come out with, hopefully, a very appealing product. Moving on through the agenda, the...
Can I ask one question? I'm sorry, I'm sitting here just kind of thinking about it. Are there any, are there any risks? I mean, I know we've talked about sales tax revenue and you built in, I think you said, less than 1% growth in 2017 or for the 2017 budget cycle, which, of course, if any of us could really accurately predict what the, what sales would be doing, you know, a year from now, you know, we'd be working on Wall Street, I guess. But, do you see, I mean, it sounds like we went pretty conservative on our estimation of sales tax revenues. Is there any, is there any risk in the budget? It sounds like you were pretty conservative on the revenue side. Do we have any risk of, do you predict any unexpected expenses? Let me rephrase it. Are there any, are there any projects or expenses that you're thinking are in the future that may end up getting bumped into this next budget year that we kind of weren't thinking on? Are there any risks that come to mind on, in this budget? It's kind of a real broad question.
Yeah, no, no, that's a good question, though. If you ask the department heads that have sat through the meetings with us, then they would say probably yes. I don't think so. We tend to take the philosophy of estimating low on the revenues and hopefully get some benefit at the end of the year through those low estimations. But I don't know that we, there's any risk that I can think of. If there is, we generally build in enough to be able to adjust and deal with those. But as far as a specific, I can't, I can't think of anything. If we get to the point of feeling that it's that important, we're going to find a way to fit it in there. I'll put it that way.
All right. Thank you.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I mean, staff has really done a, y'all have done a good job, but like you've said and Chairman Mallory said of making sure that our philosophies was aligned and reflected in your budget, which it always has been. But it just sounded like, you know, got a little conservative on the revenue side this time. So, if that's the case, that's why I asked. You know, it sounds to me like you tightened it up on the revenue, and my concern was on the expenditures part, or do we have any downside there?
Yeah, I really don't think so. But on the sales tax, this year was a surprise. I mean, Susan's shaking her head. This year was a surprise, obviously because we didn't hit the mark. But even though we've estimated fairly low, we're still kind of high, you know, compared to where we've been over the last several years because they've been growing. We're just not anticipating much more than that. So, it's not as if we've really undercut them too far. So I don't want to send the message that it's too low, but definitely not think...
The message is spend your money in Iredell County. When you drive to another county to go to the mall, you're helping their counties, not your own. Spend your money at home.
We're having the same problem that a lot of people in business are having. The number one concern by businesspeople today is not bottom-line revenue, it's top-line revenue. They're just not making the sales that they anticipated making. And of course, if you're not, consequently, the bottom line looks a little smaller. I think this is a very good budget. It adheres to what I suggested several years ago, and this is a continuation of that, that we keep some hay in the barn. Nobody has outlawed the business cycle. And there's, some of you guys are smarter than I am, and on average, we slip into recession about every seven, eight, perhaps nine years if we're lucky. Well, guess what? We're seven years out from the last one. So it's about time. Now, will it be as bad as the last one? I certainly hope not, but it will come sooner or later. And I'd remind you that a recession is, textbook definition is two consecutive quarters of negative economic growth. And that doesn't seem that bad, but you generally get a little bit of a slowdown before you actually slip into negative territory. The other thing that compounds it, you generally, you generally have to see about, very close to 3% economic growth nationally before the average person begins to recognize the difference. And it's estimated by most people that you have to have about a creation of about 300,000 jobs a month to break even because jobs go out of existence because of improved technologies and so forth. So anytime you see them say, "Well, the job market's looking good, 225,000 new jobs this month," well, that's baloney. So that's the reason you're not, you're not seeing an increase in wage growth is the reason you're not seeing an increase in sales tax growth. Back in the late 90s and 2000s, what you saw was, there were several years when we had sales tax percentage increases of over 15, sometimes approximating 20%. There was a huge amount of actual increase in wages and salaries to be paid. So, I'm optimistic about the future, I think, and I'll say this again, and I'll keep saying this. If you want to be a good prognosticator of what this county is going to do and what your budget's going to look like three years from now, and you can only look at one number, look at your commercial property tax revenue. And what that is, folks, is that is capital investment. That's what the business community is putting in personal property in their business, that's new equipment. When that number is rising significantly, then they have confidence about the future, and that means they're going to start hiring people. And that number has been flat, I believe it will continue to be relatively flat, and that's largely because of economic policy and the aggregate. And I'll say this in closing, and I said it at our retreat, just remember, the business cycle is always like that movie that you've watched 25 times. You know how it begins, you know how it ends, you always cry in the middle. It'll be okay. Mr. Smith presented you a good budget here, you got 20% fund balance, I think you're going to come out barring a significant downturn in the economy. I think you're going to be sitting here this time next year with 20% fund balance, well on the way to having constructed a new jail and a new ECOM center, and probably praising the wisdom of Steve Johnson. Thank you very much. I'll say that humbly, Mr. Chair.
We'll duly note that for the record. Okay, any further comments? Okay, at this point in time, I'll move just to announce in the closed session, we dealt with personality issues and property acquisition, basically discussions, no actions were taken presently. Is there any other business to come before the commission? Is there, Mr. Smith? Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Actually, we need to recess.
Oh, okay, so...
Motion that we recess until Monday at noon.
Monday at noon to take up budget considerations. We are in recess.